Cambridge City Council now being sessioned. If you please rise and pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Connor.
Here.
Ebancho.
Here.
Loughman.
Here.
Leonard.
Here.
Marlin.
Here.
McMillan.
Here.
Wolverton.
Here.
I make a motion. We dispense with the reading of the minutes and place on file. That's a little loud.
Turn it down, Jack.
Second, now Mr. Wolverton.
I second that motion.
All who favor the motion, say the above saying aye.
Aye.
Close same side of that motion is granted. Mayor's report. Mayor's report.
No matter what, I make a motion we replace this clock. Because I've been looking at that for weeks and months, and it's not getting any better. If we're falling out, we're never going to figure it out. Well, hang on, folks, tonight, we've got a lot going on. Normally, it's a little busy this time of year, but it's real busy. So I'm going to get down through the list, best I can. Under the mayor's portion, I do have two very important groups. They're all important. Everyone's important. But I have two groups already scheduled, and there's two more that's going to come under the audience. And I think council president, we talked about that. At least someone has. Anyhow, we're going to start out with the paper in front of it. I think, councilman, you'll recognize it's a little more than normal. Number one, Police Chief Mark Delancey requests the following. A, accept $500 donation from Cambridge Area Chamber of Commerce, Guernsey Noble Council, Officer K-9 prisoner. B, accept $1,050 from Lloyd's Towing. C, appropriate $2,541 to vehicle maintenance. D, apply for a high law enforcement body armor grant through the Ohio Attorney General's Office. E, appropriate $20,000 reimbursement from the Cambridge City Schools for school resource officer. And F, appropriate $3,000 reimbursement from the Canton K-9 Association for Officer K-9 prisoner medical. Of course, all those things will be spelled out, I'm sure, in committee. Do you want to do that? Want to get me all the way? Keep reading? Okay.
You're all going to the same.
Okay, good enough. Two, request that Kim Conrad, let's see, property code maintenance to appropriate $20,000 to services by contract, and $13,537 and 10 cents to demolition. I don't want to take all the good stuff out of that, but there's, that's a good one, isn't it, Kim? Three, Safety Director Rocky Hill requests the following items. A, appropriate $6,032 from public lands to USDA loan to public lands equipment. B, approval of negotiated contract between the city of Cambridge and Asme Local 2316. Number four, City Engineer Jeff McConaughey requests permission to, A, appropriate $13,250 to Pep to continue streets and services by contract. B, enter into pre-annexation agreement with David and Kathy Milligan. C, advertise for bids and enter into contract for 2019 continuous street improvement projects. D, enter into agreement with Strausser Construction for micro-surfacing and crack sealing of various streets using the state purchasing contract. E, advertise for bids and enter into contract for 2019 CIPP lining project. F, advertise for bids and enter into contract for the Cambridge Water Treatment Plant for roof replacement. And I know that's been needed to be handled for quite a while.
All those will be referred to the finance committee.
Thank you, Council President. Real quickly, sometimes I put a lot more in this category. I'm going to try to cool it a little bit, because we have other time. But I do want to open up with, and some of the folks from ODOT are here already, but I do want to open up on how great the ViDoc looks, and the partnership, and the focus of the engineering division and ODOT. And I think it's safe to say, all of us, when you ride through there, it's warming to see something like that, because for most of our lives, that's not the way that's looked. And I want to give a hand to all those. And maybe, I don't know that tonight's the night, but sooner or later, there might be some lights on the bridge at some point. Were they wiring up today?
They have them wired up today.
Okay. Ever since, as long as I can remember, the wire is no fault of anybody in particular. Otherwise, the vandals took the light bulbs out, broke a few things, the birds moved in, and we looked at it, you know, so. But anyhow, great to see that done. Clark Street ongoing. Thanks for everyone's patience. Not too much fussing, for the most part, and it's been pretty hard to work, but again, moving through it, it's the beginning of a long haul, but we're starting well. So with that said, I have officials tonight. I'm going to let Jeff come up, our engineer, introduce some ODOT officials. There's been some changes that's been brought to my attention, and after I started hearing the first phases of those changes, I thought, timeout is best it comes from those that know. So with that said, Jeff?
Well, there's been some change in the plans for the South Gate Bridge, so we have Ty Thompson and Curtis Zeigun with ODOT District Five here to explain the changes here.
First, thanks to Jeff and the mayor for having us come out tonight to talk to you about the project. I guess the mayor used the term timeout, and that's kind of indicative of this project right now. We're going to be starting construction here in the next few days, but that's not the case. The issue, I guess, came up during the construction phase with our contractor. And Jeff and the mayor asked that we come and kind of explain some of the issues, concerns, that we've been talking to the contractor here for the past, oh, I'd say probably the past four to six weeks on the project. First thing, I gave you a handout here to kind of explain, first, explain what the project was, so we have a firm understanding of what the project was. And then I'll go into what the concerns are that we've had as we've worked through some issues with the contractor. But I guess before I get started, I want to make sure everyone understands that the bridge is safe. The bridge is not something that we're concerned about closing because of, you know, having people go across or anything like that. That's not the issue at all. We're fully confident in the bridge being in the condition that it is to continue to service traffic here for the foreseeable future. But that's not to say there aren't some issues we want to address with the bridge, and we wanted to address with the project, but from concerns with the contractor, we're not able to do that at the time. So the first thing I want to do, like I said, is kind of go over what the project was, so we understand what it was that we were intending to do with the project. The first picture I gave to you has three different labels on it. It labels the different parts of the bridge. So there's the piers of the bridge. So those are just like the concrete legs underneath the bridge. You don't see them from the top, but you get down below, and there's a pretty high piers. So when I refer to the piers, I wanted to let you know that's what I'm referring to. The superstructure are the steel members. As you see in the picture, they're painted blue in this picture, steel girders are the superstructure. Both of those elements are in very good shape. They're rated very well. We inspect the bridge annually, so those aren't really the issue with the structure. The structure is what you see on top, the deck, the hat of the bridge, I guess, the surface that you drive on. On top, you see a little bit of potholing, but down below is where you see much more potholing. That's where our concerns were. So the project was really to replace the deck on the bridge. And we were going to do some minor things to the steel members, but more importantly, it was the deck that was the issue causing us to do the project. And with that, we were going to replace the lights, and we were going to put up some fencing and replace the sidewalk and things like that. But really, the project was for the bridge deck. Like I said, about four to six weeks ago, the contractor came to us and said, you know, the way ODOT puts together plans is we put together, this is what we want the project to happen, this is what we want the work to be done, those sort of things, but we don't dictate the methods. We don't dictate what equipment the contractor uses. We don't dictate, we typically don't dictate what methods they're going to do the work in. The contractor came to us and said, we are concerned, once we start removing the deck, that the bridge would become unstable, or that they would have to incur additional costs to make it stable. And if you flip to the second page there, the bridge, as we all know, the bridge is curved, so there's some curves in the structure. And there's two ways you can do that. You can have curved beams, which this does not, or you can kind of dogleg the beams, which is what here is on this bridge. And their concerns were, once they started to take apart the bridge, once they got all their equipment on there, the bridge at some point would become unstable. And it was at these points where I've circled them, these aren't the greatest pictures, but trust me, there's a little bit of dogleg to these steel beams, that they weren't comfortable without additional shoring. And when I say shoring, I guess what I mean is, they were going to build, they proposed to build additional piers from the ground up and to shore up the bridge. And I guess a picture of what I'm showing you is on the third page, where you see, this isn't the bridge out here in Cambridge, this is just another example of, they were going to build temporary, or proposed to build temporary shoring so that the bridge was stable during the demolition, which is a very costly endeavor. And at that point, that's when ODOT kind of, you know, let's step back for a second. If we're concerned about demoing the bridge and the additional cost, we should look at, relook at the scope of the work as to what we're going to do. So that's what we've done at this point. The contractor's incurred some costs. We're working through them with some analysis, but we're going to step back and do our own analysis to see what options we have with, can we do a deck replacement, or are we talking about having to do a replacement of a much larger scale? And at that point, I couldn't tell you what, you know, what that may be. Worst-case scenario, it's a total replacement of the bridge, but we hope it doesn't get to that. Obviously, that's a much more expensive option, that's a much more timely option. So we want to take our time to make sure we've exhausted all the options that we can to fix the bridge deck and not have to incur additional costs and to do it in a safe manner. I've thrown a lot of information at you. I don't know if this is appropriate time to take any questions.
You just need to know, you just know what the game is like, why the chains and things?
Right.
What's going to take place, what's going to end?
Right.
And ensure that while people are safe.
Right. There's some things right now that we're working through the contractor to do some, I would say, smaller repairs. Patches in the deck, adjustments to some of the joints that are there. Most of that work is for rideability issues, so that you got a smooth, so that there's a smooth ride. We're going to step back, and the analysis is probably going to take, I would say, six to eight months. So after the contractor's completed this patching work, this small work, that's it. That's what the end of their work is going to be. I know there was some work we had talked about with Jeff about doing some steps, I guess, on the south side of the bridge. We're still looking to see if the contractor can do that work, since it's not really related to the bridge and any future projects. But we would stop afterward to get the patching done. We would stop their work, and they would be finished. We'd take time to do the analysis, and right now, we're looking at probably coming back, I'll give it in the next five years, to do a project on the bridge. Whether that's a deck replacement, whether that's replacing the deck and the superstructure, or whether that's a total replacement, we don't know yet. But either, any of those three options, we want to do in the next, I would say, five years. Part of it is understanding what it is that we want to do. What is it that we can do in a cost-effective manner, in a safe manner. But we also want to be cognizant of the other projects in the city, the Clark Street project that's going to go on. I want to make sure that's all done before we tackle this structure, so.
That's one thing I may agree with. Council President, if I may, I would just ask you a thing while you're asking questions.
Sure, I'll be the first. If you, in your analysis, you find something is more immediate, you'll be back soon.
Yes, we've done the analysis, is there an immediate issue? We've done that as part of this project, and no, we don't feel that there's any immediate, you know, danger or anything of that nature. We would have been very conservative in that vein and, you know, communicated that, you know.
Nothing bothers you.
Right, no. The bridge, like I said, is safe. There's continuing to be issues to deal with, that's the reason for the project, but nothing that, you know, we would be concerned about having folks walk across it, travel across it, trucks go across it, that sort of thing. No, it's perfectly fine for that operation.
Wolverton?
Yeah, what's the timeline for just the repairs that are going to take place? Is there a certain month?
Yeah, we want to get, probably, we want to get them done, I'll say, this construction season. They're, you know, they're much more, smaller in nature. I mean, we're talking, you know, where this was months at a time, you know, I would say maybe a week or two weeks at a time, to where we got a lot more options to work with the city on, you know, if we want to avoid festivals or busy times, things like that. We got some options to work on that.
But you guys haven't set a time yet?
No, because we're still coming to an agreement as to what the contractor's going to do.
Do you have an idea when you will know?
I would say, probably in the next two weeks, we will know. We will know, and I can communicate that timeline more effective, you know, much more than just saying this construction season, so.
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you for coming.
Okay.
For taking the information.
Yep, thank you.
Unless I can tell you already that misinformation can be made.
Yeah, we're information down there at the bottom, if you guys have any other questions or anything.
Yes, appreciate very much.
Thank you.
I think coming from them kind of gives an idea that there has been some changes on some stuff. I mean, with our downtown groups and stuff like that, there was some major rescheduling going on, so this may actually help mitigate some of that, so. Safety's the number-one thing, though. I think they agree with that. Council President, I actually erred in my typing. There were so many things getting typed today. One of them, they're all important, but this one here, I want to request, and this is from my office, request to discuss entering into contract for purchase of property. So if I could add that to the mix.
All right, we'll send that to committee of the whole.
Okay, and next up, I've asked Kim Conrad from Property Code to come in and give us an update on anything, from fires to cleanup, to just updates in general, and available for any questions.
Good evening. Nice to see you all. We'll start with the fires, because we've had several of those over the last few months, and I'll just run down the ones that I'm dealing with now. You can ask me questions whenever. The Breton Road property, which was a total loss, I met with that owner today. We finally received a sizable insurance deposit. They actually have plans to demolish that property and hopefully build a new one. There will need to be a variance from the Zoning and Planning Commission, but they've spoke with the engineer, they're getting plans ready. They're going to proceed with the demolition just shortly, and then they'll go through the variance process, so they can rebuild a new house, which would be great for everybody and a nice asset in that neighborhood, I think. Clark Street, the one that happened not too long before that, that's a situation which is roped off, cordoned off still now. That's a situation where the lady had passed away that owned the house, it went to her son, those papers were destroyed in the fire, it had never actually transferred. We have, he, as the owner, has made a deal with another party within the city. We've checked with the judges, there is a way to get that done in a more timely manner than open pro debate, which there was nothing to the estate. So, and now that the house is gone, there's absolutely nothing. I spoke with the prospective owner today, who checked with the attorney, and that is in process, but that goes to court. It's called a confirmation of transfer, it's a shortened version of actually taking care of that. And once that happens, they will strike a deal that the new owner will dispose of everything in the proper manner in exchange for having the deed to that property. So we've been working on that since then. Foster Avenue was a smaller fire. There is a deposit forthcoming from the insurance company there, and then we just had one yesterday morning on North Seventh Street, which is minor in nature, not something that I would deal with as far as the insurance company comes. Luckily, it wasn't that much destruction, bad enough as it was, but the owner has been in contact with Safety Director Hill. I'll move on to the spring cleanup at this point. Again, Cambridge Township, Madison and Jefferson Township are working with us. We share the tire trailer, we share ads, work together that way. That will be April 26 and 27, 8 to 5 on Friday, 8 to noon on Saturday, at each of the prospective sites. They have their own dumpsters as we do. The tire trailer is at our city garage. As in the past, you can dispose of four tires for free, a dollar a tire after that, a dollar if it has a rim, $2 for a tractor tire. We do check ID on those, and you can come as many times as you want. We can take everything but flammable objects, of course. We cannot take refrigerators, air conditioners, heavy building materials, or shingles. We can take TVs, furniture, computers, all the other stuff. We are working with community service again. They've been real helpful in the last couple of years, and Jack now is helping to supervise and assist John Rayburn with the community service oversight on some different things. So we're trying to reach out into the community. Magistrate Liston has been helpful in giving us some new ideas about utilizing community service, so it costs us a little bit less with rising costs, which has helped. So in the last two, well, the last two cleanups we've had, community service has helped. And so that's looking forward to again this year, and hopefully that week, we will do some pickup. I don't know exactly what those plans will be yet, but if there is a senior citizen, a handicapped person out there that cannot get rid of their items, we're hopeful that those can be picked up like we've done in the past that year. And they're also going to provide workers for us again that day. They provided almost all the workers in the fall for us, so I'm hopeful that they can help us again at the spring cleanup. As I mentioned, Jack's been helping with that. He started a couple of weeks ago, and he's going to help supervise. We're going to try to utilize them for some mowing also, which we'll be starting in a couple of weeks. And everybody needs to keep in mind that eight inches is the limit, and then you are in violation after that. So we've got two other contract mowers that we use, and this, we're trying to utilize community service also. Hopefully, that will work out, so we don't have to go into the summer help, which each year becomes less and less. We continue to work with the land bank. That has recently sold a property and received three more. One of those was a fire burnt property that happened on Sixth Street quite a while ago. We've already tested that for asbestos. We got the title to that on Friday, and the contractor was notified, and we'll be giving their 10-day notification, so within the next three weeks, because that is business day identifications, notifications, that property will be coming down. And then two in the county. We're working on one in Byzville, and one in Seneca Ville will be coming down shortly. Been working with Kim Hott regarding the Seventh Street commercial property that is falling down during each storm. She's working on obtaining grant money. There was quite a difference in the first bids that we put out, almost more than doubled from the smallest to the largest. So we are rebidding that project, giving a little bit more time. We had a lot of interest in people bidding, but we were hoping that the property could be down within 30 days after bidding, and I think that shortened the number of bids, lessened the number of bids that we had come in. So we're going to extend the demolition timeline to 90 days, but we're putting it out to bid immediately, so probably those will be in within the next 10 days. We're hoping to get some new bids. Or if they stay the same, we'll go with the lesser bid. She still, though, needs to, we're trying to explore all avenues for what the difference is going to be from the grant money. And there's not a lot out there. They keep taking away those, that project money that's happened in other cities, so we're kind of at a loss, but we'll figure it out. But they are on top of it. In the meantime, it's cordoned off, it's safe, it's, you know, people aren't, unless you're walking through the rubble, you're going to be fine, so. And anybody have any questions? Did I forget anything? I think that's it.
Anything for the Congress? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. I think in a nutshell, we've got a lot going. Again, the grass mowing, get them lawn mowers fired up, oil checked, and blade sharpened, and be ready to go. I like where we're sitting at this point. I do want to thank the council members that's been involved, and Jack, again, giving your private time, like what I've seen going out there. Council President, that contains my phase of stuff. Again, we have some stuff in the audience portion, but that's it there.
Anything for the mayor to make questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go on to communications.
Yes, I have just a couple. One from the auditor, where she is requesting an appropriation to the water replacement fund from the unappropriated water replacement fund.
Motion.
Motion to refer to Finance Committee.
I'll second the motion.
All who agree with the motion, say the above saying aye.
Aye.
Close same side, that motion is granted. Next.
A monthly report from February from municipal court.
Motion to accept and place on file.
Second.
We're there, that's fine.
Last night I had to mess it up, right?
Second the motion.
Thank you. All who agree with the motion, say the above saying aye.
Aye.
Close same side, that motion is granted. That's it?
That's it.
Okay, we'll move on to reports committees.
Report of Finance Committee, April 1, we recommend that the following appropriations be approved. $27,333.33 to insurance reimbursement. Appropriate $2,800 to fire equipment.
Any questions in the committee on that report? Next.
Report of Finance Committee, April 1, we recommend that council authorize the fire department to apply for a State of Ohio EMS grant.
Any questions in the committee on that report? Next.
Report of Finance Committee, April 1, we recommend that council authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Cambridge City Band for the 2019 season. Said contract shall be for $4,000 payable from the general fund.
Any questions in the committee on that report? Next, please.
That's it.
Okay, we'll go to unfinished business. Anybody anything unfinished? And we'll go to the audience portion. If anybody wishes to speak, may approach the microphone, state your name and your address, and you'll be given five minutes. You can't have to that.
Hello, everybody. It's very, very nice to be back with you. Thanks for inviting me to come back. As the audience portion, I wanted to.
Give me your name and address.
Okay, I'm Carol Wilcox-Jones. I'm Director of Salt Fork Arts and Crafts Festival, that's why I'm here. I live in New Concord at 52 Payden Drive, New Concord. Mm-hmm, you're welcome. When we met last time, I told you a little bit as an update about the Salt Fork Arts and Crafts Festival. Very exciting, I'm very happy to be a part of it. It's going along very well. I came back tonight because we had a little something, not a little something, a very special something, in addition to producing the annual Salt Fork Arts and Crafts Festival. That happens, as you know, in the park in August every year. Well, this is our 50th anniversary celebration, and that, kudos to all those whose shoulders we stand upon. We decided, as a Blue Ribbon Committee, we should do something special for our 50th anniversary to return to the community. We formed this Blue Ribbon Committee, and this gentleman standing beside me, Mr. Bob Jennings, was on that committee. One of the things that popped up to us that seemed most appropriate would be a give-back to Cambridge. We decided, after we looked at many projects, that we wanted to do something in the park, because that's where we have been, our home, you know, for 50 years. Okay, there's not even a whiff, a sign, that we've ever been there, so we said, okay, we'll start with that thought. Maybe we should put a sign. And then it grew and blossomed, and now here's what it looks like. We decided we wanted to build an improved entrance on Edgeworth Avenue, across from the parking lot, a pedestrian entrance that would be attractive, we would improve the safety there. We began to work on that idea. Mr. Jennings developed a design. Mr. Jennings developed a design. We've taken it to the Parks Board, they're all excited about it. I think I shared this little picture with some of you the last time that I was here. This is just a picture of this particular rendition that Mr. Jennings drew up and then painted. He's also an artist. So this is what we would like to project for the Cambridge City Park. We are so excited about this. I've been putting up a tent and some landscaping to make it look really sharp, you know, and whatever. But here we go. We have a chance to do something a little more permanent. It would be a sign, both that is in keeping of what you just put up now on the bridge. It will have beautiful decorative wrought iron. Thank you. It's a stone, as you can see, a stone wall entrance. It's ADA compliant. It would add seating for the public. It would add safety, because we're going to repurpose those old lamps that y'all took down from Wheeling Avenue. We've already...
That's sweet.
That's sweet. We already have an agreement to have those repurposed, they'll be blasted, and then painted. And now we are here, because we're hoping, as we said in the beginning of our first dialogue in 2017 with the board, with the City Parks Board, we wanted to partner with Cambridge City and Cambridge City Parks. We've done the design work, we've tried to begin to announce it to the community. We hope you will become a partner with us. We didn't intend to pay for everything, but we're hoping y'all will help us. But we're willing to fundraise and bring our part to bear. We have a wonderful event coming up. Our annual fundraising event is April 25. I call it the Festival Bash. And if we do really well on our fundraising, we will have some good support for this. So if y'all would like to have that beautiful entrance, which I think I've spoken about a good bit, because I'm so ecstatically happy about how handsome it is, Mr. Jennings, thank you, then we would like to be able to find a way to make this happen. I was checking around, and by the way, Jim goes, I found this Nature Works grant possibility for you all. So maybe we could find a way to combine with that. Or if you have funds that you could contribute, we're willing to do our part, but we can't produce the festival and this by ourselves. So I hope you will find it something of interest for you. I know it will be a permanently attractive event and a lasting application to what's in the park. The park is so handsome. And by the way, I have a big thank you to Marty Matthews and Mike. They go around and trim all the low branches, fill up the potholes, they try to make it nice for the festival, and I appreciate that very, very much. And so this would just be an enhancement project. So this is what I wanted to present. Mr. Jennings, do you want to add anything to that?
No, I just, I think it is, we do have a wonderful city park, and I think this will really show it off. And plus, I don't know what you didn't mention, but we're also proposing possibly the lights, did you say, the pathways? The pathways, we have tent lights from downtown, and we're proposing to put them along the pathway, say like 90 feet apart, and then people could walk through the park at night and be safe. So that's one of the things we're doing. But I'll tell you what, be thankful we got somebody like her, because she has really worked hard on this project. And I think it'll be, it definitely will be a master to Cambridge. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Any questions about that? Oh, the cost. Y'all want to know the cost.
Exactly, yeah.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. Okay. I have initial estimates. I can tell you who's involved. I asked for bids. I'm not a, I'm a neophyte at this, okay? I'm a beginner. But I did consult with several people. We have an estimate from Jack Warren Construction for the wall, for the stone, preparation of the site, the apron. By the way, I said it was ADA compliant. You can see that you can roll right from the street in. We'll treat the water that has been a problem for that entrance. That was from Jack Warren Construction, about 16,000 is what an initial estimate was. Then I went to Freezenger's, which is wrought iron people in Zanesville. But they had done your wood lawn sign there at the cemetery, so I thought, okay, I'll ask him. And Mike LaPlante is who I spoke with. He came down, he's looked at our project, he's given me an estimate of about 15 to 16,000 as well. And then I spoke to some electricians. I've just been shaking the bushes, as my daddy used to say, shake the bushes, get the answers, put it together. So I've talked with Al Neff on electric. We can do a photo cell so that it's dusk to dawn. We have those two lamps to be repurposed. I've talked with, oh, golly, what's his name? Oh, that nice, oh, Art Rogovan. And he's going to help us with the blasting and the preparation there. So we're trying to do as much outreach and in-kind as we can. But I would appreciate it if we pull this project together. I want to present it at the Festival Bash and see if our fundraising efforts are successful. I would like to have this for the 50th anniversary. Wouldn't that be cool? Fabulous. And for those people who are able to support us, we are prepared to put a beautiful plaque on the wall that says, "Thank you to these generous sponsors." So that's it for us. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
That it, Mayor?
I just want to...
Anybody else?
Glad you were calling.
Okay, anybody else in the audience portion?
Hi, my name's Kevin Healy. I live at 6997 Covison Road, Cumberland, Ohio. I'm here with the Weebloes from Cub Scout Troop 547. We had a pin that we're trying to earn. We had to speak with some leaders in the community, so I figured the best way would just come up here and see how you guys do. So...
Glad to have you here.
Thank you. They're a little shy, they don't want to come up here, so let me come up.
Come on, boys, come on right up there.
Come out there, yeah. There we go. Yeah.
Young man. That should be recognized.
Yes.
Tell us their names. Yeah, master.
We have Mason here, we have Dawson, Aiden, and then Corbin.
Glad to have you guys here.
Give my hand for working hard.
Yeah, absolutely. All right, thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you. You guys are welcome, come back anytime. Okay, nothing else in the audience portion, we'll move on to new business. Mr. Conway?
Thank you. For new business, I thought it would be appropriate to look into the possibility for city employees gifting time, sick time, to one another. There's currently not an ordinance on city record that would allow employees to do that, so I thought, unfortunately, I won't be here to discuss it, but I think that'd be something that'd at least be worth looking into to benefit the employees here. Thank you.
Do you want to make that in the form of a motion?
I would like to...
Send it to legislative?
Yeah, I'd like to make that motion, to send it to legislative.
Go there.
I probably should go to Finance, because it will have financial...
All right, so if you want to amend your motion, send it to Finance instead.
I do.
Thank you. I would allow.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Close same side, and that will go to Finance Committee.
Thank you.
One more, one more strong step. Not a bad thing.
Back at lunch.
That's right. Anything else on a new business? We'll go to ordinances and resolutions.
First one is a resolution authorizing participation in the ODOT road salt contracts awarded for 2019.
Mr. Marlin?
I make a motion, we suspend.
Mr. Wolverton?
I second that motion.
Roll call on the suspension, please.
Leonard?
Yes.
Marlin?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Conway?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Lothman?
Yes.
Ivancho?
Yes.
Mr. Leonard?
Motion to pass.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Conway?
Yes.
Marlin?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Ivancho?
Yes.
Leonard?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Lothman?
Yes.
And that ordinance is declared adopted. Next, please.
An ordinance authorizing the fire department to apply for a State of Ohio 2019 EMS grant.
Ivancho?
Motion to suspend.
Mr. Wolverton?
Second the motion.
Roll call on the suspension, please.
Conway?
Yes.
Marlin?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Lothman?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Motion to pass.
Mr. Wolverton?
Second to pass.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ivancho?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Leonard?
Yes.
Lothman?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Conway?
Yes.
Marlin?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Ivancho?
Yes.
Marlin?
Motion to pass.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Ivancho?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Leonard?
Yes.
Lothman?
Yes.
Wolverton?
Yes.
Marlin?
Yes.
Conway?
Yes.
And that ordinance is declared adopted. Next, please.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Cambridge City Band.
Mr. Ivancho?
Motion to suspend.
Mr. Marlin?
I second that motion.
Roll call on the suspension.
Conway?
Yes.
Marlin?
Yes.
McMillan?
Yes.
Ivancho?
Yes.
Leonard?
Yes.[1613.21]